Good evening, everyone. This is the Tuesday, October 28th, meeting of the Select Board. I am Beth Cassavan and I am sitting in this evening for our chair. We'll take a moment and introduce ourselves.
Carlos Garcia.
Greg Richards.
Nick Haas, Benefits Coordinator.
Juanita Anderson, Executive Assistant.
And I'd like to take a moment just to welcome you, Ms. Anderson. We are really excited to have you onboard as part of the staff in the Town Manager's Office. I know that you'll be directly supporting our board and looking forward to getting to work with you.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here.
Okay, the first item on the agenda is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move of approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number two is to review an act to approve the minutes of the October 14th, 2025 meeting. Colleagues, I'm going to ask that we hold off on approving them just because we... I had heard from a colleague that we'd like to have a little bit more detail around some of the recommendations on the warrant articles. Item number three is announcements and reports. Does anyone have any announcements this evening?
Madam Chair, I just have one. So, in light of recent federal actions to suspend SNAP funding, I know that there's been some questions out there in the community about what folks can do in the interim period of time. So I just wanted to elevate some opportunities for folks to either find relief or to offer support. The first is that we do have a community fridge here in Shrewsbury, right outside of the Senior Center. That is available 24/7 for folks to take what they need and leave what they can. So that opportunity is there for folks to, if they need it, for immediate relief or to donate foods. And I do know that the Rotary Club does have a way for folks to donate funds to help keep that refrigerator stocked.
Yes, there's a link on the Rotary Club's webpage. If you went to shrewsburyrotary.org, you would be able to find a secure link to make donations to that, to the fridge.
Thank you. And then I did want to elevate our two food pantries that we have in the community. So there is one in the Senior Center that supports our seniors, of course. There, the information for that is available on the website. They're always looking for donations for food, so that is an opportunity for folks. As well as St. Anne's Food Pantry, which does have food distribution on Mondays. And they also are looking for food donations. So if those are opportunities that call to you, please, I encourage you to donate to that. And then I did, of course, we have Worcester County Food Bank here and located in Shrewsbury on Route 9. So they always are in need of funds and food. So just encourage folks to contact them if that's, if those are opportunities that you want to participate in.
Item number four is the Town Manager's Report. Mr. Mizikar is not with us this evening because he is participating in a professional development experience. So we will skip over that. Item number five is public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy 31 to offer citizens the opportunity to provide public comments during Select Board meetings matters within the Board's authority. No one has signed up for public comment this evening, but as a reminder, if you wish to speak with us, we'd be happy to have you sign up just noon before, on the Monday before our meetings, and we will be happy to have you come and share your thoughts. Item number six, we're going to have to skip for just for now because it is a 7:05 PM hearing and it is not yet 7:05 PM. So I'm going to skip down and just go through some of the correspondence. Item number eight is an email dated October 11th, 2025, from Ron Pooz, 7 Westwood Road regarding speak at the 10:14:25 Select Board Meeting. Item number nine is an email dated October 12th, 2025, from Julie Boras, 6 Catalina Drive regarding respectfully requesting fair consideration for Article 7. Item number 10 is an email dated October 14th, 2025, from Amber Khan, Shrewsbury Robotics regarding the Shrewsbury Robotics Open House. That is Sunday, this Sunday, November 2nd, from noon to 4 at Shrewsbury High School. That's always a really fun event. If people are able to go, they demonstrate their robot, so that's a lot of fun to see. Item number 11 is an email dated October 14th, 2025, from Naomi Halpern, 131 Stony Hill Road regarding Article 7, let Shrewsbury residents have a voice. Item number 12, email dated October 17th, 2025, from Vicki Holbrook, Rocket Close regarding follow-up payoff request for the Betterment Lean for Rena Flynn on Frybeck Avenue. And it is now 7:05, so I will stop reading correspondence and move to item number six on our agenda, which is a 7:05 PM tax classification public hearing and joint meeting with the Board of Assessors. And the Select Board will review and take action upon the conclusion of the public hearing relative to the adoption of the FY '26 tax rate for all property classifications within the town of Shrewsbury. I'd like to welcome you and ask that you just introduce yourselves for the record.
I'm Alicia Howe, I'm the Board Assessor.
Thanks for being with us.
For anyone who doesn't know me, I'm Ruthie Anderson. I'm your Principal Assessor. Also joining--
Oh, we're getting the timeout sign from Shrewsbury Media Connection, so there must be a reason.
Can't hear.
There's a connection. It's not connected. Thank you. All right, let's try again. She just locked herself out of the room. She had to go around.
Okay. Good evening and welcome to the annual classification hearing. For anyone who doesn't know, I'm Ruthie Anderson, your Principal Assessor. Joining me are my Assistant Assessor Tiffany Peters and my Assistant to the Assessor Franklin Cropley decided to join us tonight as well. And of course, my board member, one of my board members, Alicia Howe. This presentation was prepared for the Select Board and Town Manager specifically. In order to achieve the votes, we need to submit to the DOR for certification of our tax rate. But it will also be available on our website within a few days for residents and taxpayers to review. Anyone with any questions on the information presented tonight or the assessment process in general is encouraged to call or email our office or stop by during our regular hours. We're happy to discuss value and answer any other questions. Tonight, we're going to present information relating to the entire assessment process, from valuation to tax levy, as well as updates on the Assessor's Office and the ever-popular, to me anyway, comparisons to other communities. We'll be asking the Select Board to vote on a residential factor to determine whether Shrewsbury will maintain a single tax rate for fiscal '26, as well as whether to accept certain exemptions available by statute. I include this glossary each year to define terms that will show up over the course of the presentation. Unless someone spends their time, their days in gross and municipal finance, these aren't things we talk about every day. So I've made it my practice to provide some basic definitions to avoid confusion as we move forward. So the big question for tonight's hearing is why are we here? And the short answer is because we have to be. Master of Law, Chapter 40, Section 56 states that each city or town shall annually determine the percentages of the local levy to be borne by each class of property. This is accomplished by voting on a residential factor that determines the ratio that residential property will be taxed in comparison to other classes, commercial and industrial, and also by voting on whether to enact certain exemption provisions. In order to give the Board as much information as possible, we also take this opportunity to report on valuation changes that were certified by the Department of Revenue on October 14th, as well as update you on the work of the Assessor's Office over the past year. So as the first part of our department update, I'd like to let you know who's doing the work in the assessing department. Karen Berger is our Financial Assistant. She's been with the town for over 10 years. Victor Pellegrino is our Data Lister. He's a Shrewsbury resident and he's been with us since June. Also joining us in June was Franklin Cropley, a recent Bentley graduate who's learning quickly about all things, excuse me, all things assessing. And we were thrilled to have Tiffany Peters rejoin the department after the departure of Greg Hamilton in April. Tiffany has achieved a CAA certification, brings great energy, and lots of new ideas to the office. And finally, I'm your Principal Assessor. I have my MAA designation. I've been in assessing for over 22 years, serving in four communities. I'm also a senior instructor with the MAAO, and I've been their treasurer since 2019. I've been happily coming to work at 100 Maple Ave for four and a half years. Our goals for fiscal '26 center around completion of our quintennial... You don't use that word every day? I've been using it a lot, certification. Every year, the Department of Revenue certifies that our assessments properly reflect market value in the community. Every five years, each town must perform a full revaluation of all aspects of valuation. Since January of 2025, we have performed comprehensive analyses and review of all cost tables, including all classes of real estate, which is residential, commercial, and industrial, as well as land, outbuildings, and extra features to ensure they accurately reflect current market conditions in Shrewsbury. Also through this project, we reviewed all land neighborhoods, specifically focusing on properties adjacent or nearly adjacent to Lake Quinsigman, and developed an appropriate and accurate cost table for any new neighborhoods created. We received preliminary certification of values on September 26th. And after a required disclosure period where residents could review their proposed assessments, we received final certification of values on October 14th. Continuing with our goals, we have created an assessing handbook, which is available on our page of the website that details the steps in the assessing process and includes a tutorial on how to read a property record card. This will be a living document. It will be updated annually with new cost tables and other information to make the valuation process as transparent as possible. The fiscal '26 report will be posted once we receive certification of our tax rate. We have also begun preparations to draft and produce some public service announcements for the local access station that will cover timely topics such as excise abatements, our inspection program, and tax relief programs. And finally, we will continue our cyclical reinspection program to maintain the progress made over the last couple of years to inspect all properties on an eight-year cycle to ensure data quality across the community. So these are just a few of the numbers we deal with on a regular basis. There are nearly 13,300 parcels in Shrewsbury that need to be positively identified, including location and ownership, and then classified properly to, in order to be valued correctly each year. In 2024, there are 863 real estate transfers that needed to be reviewed and entered. We performed 1,514 property inspections. We issued over 40,600 excised tax bills and will assess over $10 billion in real estate and personal property value for the current year. This is a graphical representation of our inspection program and the progress we have made over the last few years. We are on track this year to complete 1,900 inspections. Since we instituted this program, the department has visited over 6,400 properties in Shrewsbury to ensure accurate data for valuation purposes. All credit goes to my staff who monitor sales and permits. They send postcards, make appointments, and perform the actual inspections and associated data entry. We accepted, reviewed, and processed 244 statutory exemption applications amounting to over $344,000 in credits to qualified residents. We also managed the standing with Shrewsbury Tax Relief Fund application process, reviewing 20 applications and granting abatements of $12,000. Every taxpayer has the right to appeal their assessment each year, and last year, we received 46 applications for abatement. Each was thoroughly reviewed, including a physical inspection of the properties and careful analysis. And the Board of Assessors voted to grant abatements to, excuse me, 19 taxpayers for a total of $55,539 in abated tax. We currently have six pending cases at the Appellate Tax Board, but five of them are for commercial properties owned by the same entity, hence the asterisk. The other is on a centrally valued cellular company. And during fiscal '25, we were successful in defending our values on two cases at the Appellate Tax Board, both single-family homes, and we were able to reach settlement on two others, one residential and one commercial. New growth is an important part of the levy calculation each year and represents changes to property values that occurred after the start of the previous fiscal year. In Shrewsbury, we have accepted the local option available under Chapter 653 of the Acts of 1989. By law, the assessment date for all property is the January 1st prior to the start of the fiscal year. So for fiscal '26, that's January 1, 2025. Chapter 653 requires that we assess all property in its current state as of the June 30th, immediately prior to the July 1 start date. And all of that additional value is considered growth to the annual levy. We also perform audits of personal property each year, and that is added to the amount of growth reported. These charts show the amount of tax-based growth, tax-based growth, excuse me, captured over the last six years, both in value and tax dollars. The slide that's up is slightly different than the original that you received in your packet as Mr. Mizikar asked me to break out the residential from the commercial industrial personal property. My apologies for the fiscal '21 column at the end. I only gathered information from '22. If anyone really wants the fiscal '21 breakdown, I can get it for you. So these charts are another way of looking at the same data, going from the current fiscal year back to fiscal '22. Shrewsbury has gained over $621 million in value and over $8 million in tax revenue over the last five fiscal years. Again, this slide shows the breakout of residential and CIP values and taxes, which was not in your original packet. Okay, moving on to valuation. The Board may remember that the number of sales in 2023 dropped whether due to interest rates remaining high or some other factor. In 2024, the market rebounded a bit with more sales than the previous year. We still haven't reached the numbers we saw just during and just after the pandemic, but prices continued to increase year over year. There may be a correction in the works, though, as we're seeing fewer sales in 2025, and overall, the sale prices aren't increasing at the same pace. Sales in 2025 will form the basis of our assessments for fiscal '27. By law, our assessments have to reflect the market, and values for fiscal '26, which started July 1 of '25, are indicative of the market in Shrewsbury during calendar '24. This year is our quintennial recertification year. As stated earlier, on top of the usual market adjustments, we performed a deeper analysis into all of our cost tables, including building styles, land, and detached structures. The DOR has reviewed our data and certified that our process met their requirements to assess all properties at full and fair cash value according to master law. So this chart shows the sales price as a percentage of the asking price. And you'll see that we had more sales at higher prices than the prior year, but time on the market has increased a little. 19 days is still very quick for a sale. In the big scheme of things, as you will note that during 2021, it was over 27 days. The average sale price is 10.7% higher, and sales occurred after only slightly more time on the market. The average sale price so far in '25 shows that pricing is holding fairly steady with a moderate increase over '24, but far fewer sales. We're often asked what percentage of market value the assessments are based on, and we reference the law, which states in Chapter 59, Section 38, that assessments must be based on fair cash value, which is defined by the market. And the market in Shrewsbury has increased at an incredible rate. Just in the last five years, sale prices of single-family properties have increased by over 46%. This chart shows the changes year by year. And anyone who wonders why their valuation is so high needs to understand that the law instructs us to assess at 100% of fair market value, and the market has jumped considerably. I'd like to show you some data that illustrates how quickly and how much the market in Shrewsbury has changed, or a million ain't what it used to be. This chart shows the number of residential sales that sold for over $1 million each year since 2020. You see that the number of sales in that price range has increased over six times, and the percent of the total sales has gone from 3.19 to 23.29. This chart makes it abundantly clear the direction that the market has taken in this community. And I remind the Board and anyone watching from home that assessments must reflect this increase in the market by law. Condominium sales, on the other hand, continued a downward trend in the number of sales, and in 2024, also saw a drop in the average sale price. The lower average sale price doesn't correlate to an overall drop in assessment in that class, however, due to the completion of the apartment complex at 526 Hartford Turnpike, which technically is two condominiums filled with rental apartments. So this is the statistical slide. And it just kind of illustrates the valuation process and what we need to do for the DOR. So we must complete an analysis of all arms-length sales that occurred during the appropriate year. We calculate an assessment-to-sale ratio, or ASR, to determine whether the sales meet the standard of representing full fair cash value. And then we calculate the coefficient of dispersion to assure that no single class is being assessed outside the acceptable comparisons of the primary class. So what does all this mean? That's a lot of math talk. This chart shows that the median ASR of the major classes in Shrewsbury. The primary class is single-family homes, and our assessments have a median of 0.97, or 97% of the sale price. This falls within the DOR requirement of 90 to 110, so we're all set. Not quite. Every other class, then, must have an ASR within 5% of the primary class, but also fall within the 90 to 110 parameters. So we could assess single-family homes with a median of 1.06, but that would make assessing all the other classes of property that much more difficult because they need to fall within 5% of the 1.06, but still be within the 90 to 110. On top of all of that, we need to calculate a coefficient of dispersion, which is a statistic that measures how close all points of data are to the center. We all know there's a variation in the market where very similar properties sell for very different prices. A COD that is too low can represent values that overall are too close to the sale price, which isn't likely when we're looking at the number of sales that we have to do. You'll see here that our median ASR for our primary class is 97, which is well within the acceptable range. And in addition, our CODs all fall below the limits set by the DOR. Values increased overall this year by over $750 million, or 8.07, since last year. 8.07%, excuse me. These numbers themselves are difficult to fathom, but they're even more mind-boggling when we look back four years to fiscal '22. Since then, overall values have increased by nearly $3.06 billion, or 43.8%. And while I didn't add this data in, I compared Shrewsbury with the state totals from fiscal '22 to '25, found that total assessments in the state increased by nearly 40%. I mention that to make it clear that yes, values here have gone up significantly in recent years, and no, we're not the only ones. Increases like these in the market must be reflected in the assessment by law. The average single-family assessment has risen by $54,233 since last year, or 7.67%. And $237,946 since fiscal '22, or 45.5%. Keeping everything in perspective, however, the average single-family tax bill will increase by $242, or 2.84% more than last year, and it's gone up by $1,371, or 18.57% since '22. These graphs show visually the changes in the tax rate and the dollar amount over the last 11 years. The spike in fiscal '22 represents the most recent override. And similarly, these show the change in value by percentage and dollar amount over the same timeframe. I've added this slide to show the cumulative changes over the last five years. It's a frequent refrain at our counter over the phone. Residents say their taxes bills have doubled in the last few years. While I'm not discounting the outlier, on average, while single-family values have increased by almost 46%, the average tax bill has gone up by 18.6%. Also, the total taxable value in town has gone up by nearly 44%, but the total levy has increased by 17.7%. The levy limit determines how much we are allowed to raise through taxation under the confines of Proposition 2.5. The starting point is last year's levy limit, to which we add any amended growth, which for us is the amount from our personal property audit program. And then we calculate 2.5% of that total. We add the current year's approved growth along with any override, which is zero this year, to reach the new proposed levy limit. The levy ceiling is equal to 2.5% of the total taxable value in Shrewsbury, and the levy limit must be less than that. Fiscal '26 levy limit is calculated to be $106,890,630. The actual levy is the amount we will raise through taxation of real estate and personal property. It's calculated by starting with the total budget amount approved at town meeting, which in our case is $193,69,431.50. That number is adjusted by state and town receipts, free cash, and any other transfers applied to reduce the tax burden. The balance remaining is the levy for the fiscal year. This number, more than anything else, drives the calculation of each taxpayer's annual bill. And for fiscal '26, it stands at $115,486,814.55, or 59.82% of the amount needed. This graph shows that breakdown again, highlights the fact that taxes account for just under 60% of the amount needed to meet the budgetary needs of the town. To determine any excess levy capacity, the levy limit is adjusted by adding any debt or capital exclusions, stabilization fund overrides, or water sewer costs. And the total is the maximum allowable levy for fiscal '26. This is the amount the town is allowed to raise before needing another override. The difference between the maximum allowable levy and the actual levy is the excess levy capacity. And for this year, that stands at $84,542.45. Once the values have been certified and the levy has been calculated, determining the tax rate is a simple mathematical equation in which the levy is divided by the total taxable value and multiplied by 1,000. Assuming this Board votes to maintain a single tax rate, that rate will likely be $11.50 per thousand of assessed value. This is a reduction of 54 cents, or 4.49%. Assessed values represent each taxpayer's proportionate share of the levy. Values are not raised in order to increase tax revenue, nor are they voted on by anyone in Shrewsbury. Values are simply a representation of what an owner could have expected to receive if their property had been placed on the open market during our analysis year of 2024. This chart shows how tax bills would change if values increased or decreased across the board and illustrates how the levy is the driving factor in calculating the tax bill. Where the values were 20% higher or 20% lower than they are, the resulting tax bills would be identical. As I stated earlier, the levy is the main determining factor of the amount of each individual tax bill. The assessment calculates each owner's proportionate share of the levy and literally their piece of the pie. This chart illustrates how the levy is divided between differently valued properties. Each taxpayer pays according to their assessed value, but the amount of the levy and the size of the pie remains the same. If we oversimplify the example amount, imagine there were 10 residents in town. Each price point represented one property, and our levy was $76,500. Each owner would pay their proportionate share based on their assessment. The same holds true for more than 13,000 properties in Shrewsbury. I just can't fit them all on a pie chart. The same holds true for more than 13,000 properties in Shrewsbury. I just can't fit them all on a pie chart. So the primary decision before the board tonight is voting on a residential factor. This will determine whether Shrewsbury will maintain a fixed tax rate where each class of property is taxed at the same percentage or move to a split rate which taxes classes differently. We continue to be a majority residential community with that percentage holding steady between 87 and 89% over the last 10 years. If the board votes to accept a residential factor of anything other than one, it will split the tax rate so those properties classified as commercial, industrial, and personal property, or CIP, will pay a larger portion of the levy through a higher tax rate. This is a very basic illustration of what that might look like based on a 10% or a 50% shift. With our ratio of residential to CIP properties being approximately 7 to 1, for each dollar saved on the residential side, an additional $7 will be owed by the CIP taxpayers. In addition, when utilizing the standard income approach to valuation on commercial and industrial property, higher taxes are calculated as higher expenses, which will eventually reduce the value of those properties in subsequent years. This list shows the top 15 taxpayers in Shrewsbury for fiscal '26, their total assessed value, the taxes expected, and their percentage of the total levy. Overall, these 15 entities account for over 7.2% of the total levy. So this chart shows the correlation between tax dollars collected and governmental costs expended for each class. It's an important concept when discussing whether to enact a split rate in Shrewsbury. Basically, for each dollar collected in tax revenue, the town will spend $1.46 on residential services and an average of 61 cents on commercial, industrial, and personal property services. Essentially, the non-residential properties are subsidizing the residential class, and that ratio would be even wider with a split rate as shown on the bottom two rows of the chart. One of the two exemption options before the board tonight is a residential exemption. This allows the town to exempt up to 35% of the average assessed value from residential properties used as the primary residence of the owner. If adopted, this exemption increases the residential tax rate for everyone and shifts the burden of the residential portion of the levy onto higher-valued homes. 19 communities in Massachusetts adopted a residential exemption last year, and you'll note that most of them are towns with a higher percentage of seasonal residence or rental properties. And they've chosen to shift the burden away from their year-round residents who typically live in more moderately valued homes. The second exemption before the board is a small commercial exemption wherein the town can exempt up to 10% of the value of Class III commercial properties if they are occupied by a small business with fewer than 10 employees and a property value of less than 1 million. Similar to the residential exemption, this would shift the burden from properties occupied by small businesses onto larger entities. In a multi-unit property, all employers must qualify. 271 commercial properties fall under the 1 million valuation limit this year, and it's important to remember that any tax break goes to the owner of the real estate, not the small business leasing the space. And that in a multi-tenanted property, all employers must meet the qualifications. Every year, I include community comparisons showing data from Shrewsbury and other communities from the previous year. We keep copies of this information at our office because it's a good visualization of how taxes here compare to our neighbors in similar communities. So this first one shows how we compare to Grafton. Our average single-family value was $81,161 higher, but the average single-family tax bill was $212 lower. Similarly, I've chosen Holliston and Northborough. Our average value was almost $1,200 higher than Holliston, but our average tax bill was $1,828 less. And compared to Northborough, our average value is almost $43,000 higher and our average tax bill is $952 less. And this is an overall summary showing where the average single-family tax bills fell on the list of communities ranked throughout the Commonwealth fiscal '25. Like previous years, our average single-family home value ranked at the top of the list, but our tax rate and average single-family tax bill were the lowest, as was the average bill as a percentage of income according to the DOR. The state averages are in the bottom row. Okay, my annual public service announcement to anyone watching or listening, please check your property record card to make sure the data is correct. Record cards are available through the portal on the assessor's page of the town website or by contacting the office. We can print it, we can email it, we can send it to you, to anyone that asks. So no one makes mistakes on purpose, but they do happen. And when they do, that data carries forward until it's corrected through an inspection by one of our staff. Also, conditions change over time, and what was considered good in 2005 might be average in 2025. And the assessment is based on information that is at least 10 years old. If you find anything that seems out of place, please call to make an appointment for one of us to come out and take a look. We'll walk through the interior, measure the exterior, and the whole process takes about 30 minutes. At last, we've reached the end of the data overload. The Board of Assessors recommends that the select board vote a residential factor of 1 to maintain a single tax rate. We also recommend that the board vote not to accept a residential exemption or a small commercial exemption. It's no longer required to have the select board sign the LA5 form. However, we'd like the board's vote to allow us to digitally sign the form in Gateway. Then the town clerk will certify the votes taken tonight. We can then submit everything to the DOR as soon as possible and hopefully get a certified tax rate by the middle of November. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I always learn something when I listen to it. And then I always find myself confused by parts of it, too.
It's a lot of math.
It's a lot of math. And you do wonderful work in your offices.
I was an English major, go figure.
I ended up here. Let me open it up and see if anybody has any questions this evening.
I know you have questions.
Oh, I have lots. I do have a few, so bear with me. I've not gone through this process, so. A couple of basic questions. And I'm looking at, in the memo you provided, there's also this LA4 form. One basic question, what is a miscellaneous residential property?
So that's something that is not commercial, so it's not income-producing. Usually, it's something that if you have a... They're weird, I'll just say it. So say you own two lots and your house is on one and your garage is on the other. And you get two tax bills because it's two lots. The one with the garage would be in that miscellaneous residential. So it's not a house, it's not a single-family house. It, you know, everything is classified. The DOR, I don't know if it's on there. There's use codes that are set by the Department of Revenue, land use codes. And everything has to fall into one of those codes so that we can value it properly. So a miscellaneous would probably be improved, but not residential. The most common one I can think of is it's just a garage or a shed, but it's still a separate parcel.
Second question is, is there, I guess, I'm looking at the difference year over year between the property types. Because what I've noticed is the assessed value difference also takes into account different numbers of parcels. So what I'm trying to ask is, so if you don't factor in parcel difference, what is the value difference in the assessment? So for instance, the reason I'm asking, apartments, right? You added, there's a net new two parcels, but the assessed difference was $52 million in those two. So if you took those out, you're showing a 10.4% difference of assessed value. What would it be without those net parcels? Same thing with single-family, because what I'm trying to get at is you have a lot more transactions when it comes to residential property versus, let's say, apartment complexes of that nature. So how do you ensure that the valuation of like apartment complexes is, I guess, reflecting current market conditions without the sales? Fair question. Is that, you understand what I'm asking?
Yep, absolutely. So apartment complexes, even though they are classified as residential, they're basically a commercial entity. So we would use the income approach on that. So we basically collect from those property owners the income and the expenses that were true for the property, and then we can do an analysis based on how much money it makes. Because if you want to buy an apartment complex, the first question you're going to ask is what's it going to make me? So the income is what drives the market. So we will use that, and the DOR does accept that, income approach to value to determine that.
Oh, okay. So it's not really based off of, let's say, what you could get per square foot? You're looking at it from, in that case, more of a revenue-generating circumstance.
Right, and to your point, there aren't that many sales. And the sales that do occur are often more like an investment portfolio sale. So something will come across and be, oh, they got $120 million for that apartment complex in Marlboro, say. But it wasn't just that apartment complex, there were other things at play. So that's not really what we call an arms-length transaction because it's not typical of the market. There's something else in play. So that's why we use the income approach to back up the few valid sales that we do have.
And is that the same approach down? Because I noticed, too, on the multi-use properties, so the ones that are split, say, I'm guessing, is that horizontal, vertical, mixed-use property where you show multi-use residential, multi-use commercial? And those assessed values are essentially, maybe it's just how it came out, it's almost 50/50. Half residential, half commercial. Would you apply that same methodology? Depending on if that, say, somebody owns that or lives there versus rental property for both residential and the commercial side?
Yeah, so anything that's income-producing, we're going to rely very heavily on that income approach to value.
I'll pause for a second.
Thank you for being here and for the presentation and appreciate your team for being here as well. I did have a question. I appreciated that you provided some information about if we were to possibly pursue a split rate. I wanted to make sure I caught you or understood what you said. So you said, I think that you said that splitting the rate will eventually lead to a reduced value of a property over the next several years. Did I mishear you or misunderstand?
That's a very real possibility because going back to Mr. Richards' questions about valuing income-producing properties, one of the things that we do is it makes this much money, but then it costs this much money to keep it afloat. So the higher the expenses are, which real estate taxes are an expense, that's calculated against the income. And I'm not going to get into the whole giant thing, but you have a gross income, potential income, and then a net income. So the net income is what we are going off of. The net income's going to be lower if the expenses are higher. So eventually, that's going to start to correlate to a lower value.
That's helpful because I think, I'm sure each of us have heard it when we talk with residents, I think there's a desire from some in our community to do, to look at a split rate and explore that. And, you know, I think that consistently over the years, we have not pursued that so that we don't, you know, push away any commercial. So, but I think this information is really helpful. So thank you for that.
I did have another question about the relief opportunities. Was just curious if there are, in your experience, folks who perhaps qualify but are hesitant to accept some of those?
Absolutely, which is very frustrating for us. I mean, we can't go door-to-door, we can't, you know, mail. It's very difficult to get the word out and to encourage people to apply. There's a certain demographic that would see certain things as more of a charity thing than something that they are qualified for. And we would love for people to apply. We can't force anyone to apply. The one thing that I do often say is, one of the concerns is often because they're income and asset-based, we have to receive some very private income and asset information from people. And we have heard the concern, I don't want my personal information floating around Town Hall. I stress all the time, by law, we cannot share it with anyone. None of you, town manager, nobody could come to our office and ask to see the paperwork for any exemption application. It's our staff and it's our board, and those are the only ones by law that can view that. So if anyone has that concern, I would really love to put it to rest because if you qualify, we want to help you.
Right, and that's certainly a desire I think that we would, we share, so.
I do put things, I'm sorry to interrupt, we do put things in all of the newsletters that we can, the COA newsletter, the Select Board newsletter. Tanner's doing a great job about reaching out and getting information to get out there. It's going to be part of our public service announcements that we're going to run through the local cable. I'm just not sure what else we can do to get the word out to people that might qualify for that.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And it was exciting to hear that you'll be doing some outreach via SMC. I think that that's a good opportunity to just keep getting the word out.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think one of the other, if I can just piggyback on getting the word out, right? I mean, we've talked about how to let people know of so many different safety net programs that are available. I think sometimes this, you know, if you go through St. Anne's, for example, and provide them with your information, they're able to provide it to their clients because often people who are experiencing food insecurity might also be experiencing difficulty paying their taxes. So maybe that's another avenue to explore. And then you're always welcome to put pamphlets in the pantry at the community fridge. You know, that we encourage organizations to do that or, you know, stick something laminated onto the fridge. It's another way to try to reach people. I always say that like the people who need these kinds of supports don't even know that they exist. And they're not sitting home watching this meeting and they may just be flying completely under the radar of anybody who, you know, knows where these kinds of services can be accessed.
I did also want to just jump in on your point about the single tax rate. And I know that, you know, I talk about this every year, how a single-family home is a cost center and it costs the town more than the dollar you pay in taxes in order to provide you with the services that you receive as a single-family homeowner. And so wanting to make sure that we really grow our commercial tax base, one of the things that I think draws a business to Shrewsbury, not only is it Selco, because I think Selco is a huge draw for why businesses locate here, but I also think that, you know, if you look at the surrounding communities, we have a much better tax rate and it's a single tax rate. So again, as we work to try to grow our commercial base as a way to offset the impact on the residential taxpayer, that's one of the reasons why this board has always favored the residential factor of 1. You must have more questions.
Oh, of course.
Okay, hit it.
Well, I'll just make a comment. It's an interesting data point. We actually have higher assessed value for exempted property than commercial. $694 million of exempt property and only $691 million of commercial. Do you have a, is there a breakdown, like how much of that is owned by the town of Shrewsbury?
How much of the exempted?
Of exempted property.
I can get that for you. I don't know it off the top of my head.
Kind of just curious in the breakdown because there's essentially, I mean, obviously, they're exempt for a reason, but it's about $8 million of additional tax revenue, right, that we can't get because they're exempt. But it's just an interesting number to say how small really our commercial base is when you look at exempt property. I do have a question on just the process, just to see if I completely understand. When you talk about re-inspecting, is the, is there a percentage of properties that are re-inspected a year? Is that number mandated by the state? Or is that just that eight-year cycle? You talk about the number of properties you try to inspect in a given year?
So the Department of Revenue, it's not a law and it's not a rule, but the Department of Revenue oversees everything that we do. And one of the things that they, one of their guidelines is that every property be seen at least once every ten years. So that's the, that's the rule that we all try to follow. But in Shrewsbury, since I got here, we are trying to be a little bit more aggressive so that, not so that we, this, this is a, this is a strange thing for, for us, because the perception is often very incorrect. That peo- people think that the town is out to stick it to them and money-grab and that kind of a thing. And nothing could be further from the truth. The reason we are out in the field, the reason we are trying to inspect properties, is so that we know they're assessed correctly. So that nobody is being assessed for anything they don't have. And that nobody is not being assessed for something they do have. Because when everyone is assessed for exactly what they have, that's fair and equitable for everybody. So that is our overreaching goal, is to be fair and equitable. And we want to get there sooner than the state tells us that we have to. So we're trying to be on an eight-year cycle, where if a property hasn't been visited, we will send the postcard and we will try to get out there. I'm going to then say on top of that, there's never any legal requirement that anyone allow us into their home. It's strictly a courtesy. We send postcards, we send letters, we try to set appointments. But if we show up at your door and you do not want us there, for whatever reason, you tell us and we say, "Thank you very much and have a nice day." And we will leave and there's no repercussions, there's no penalty, there's no anything. But our goal is not to be money-grubbing. Our goal is to make sure that it's correct.
So just to clarify that, so, so every year, you're, you're changing the assessed value of every property based off of market?
Correct.
By a certain percentage based off of, like in a, right, let's say, single-family homes? Square footage, whatever other factors, I'm sure there's other factors. Then, if you pull a building permit and you do some additional betterment, that gets in there as part of new growth throughout that year and then rolls into your total value.
Correct.
If you don't do that, you still potentially would have a visit, you know, once every ten years that's just validating that nothing has potentially changed or something over that period. Maybe they start reassessing different types of, I guess, part of your property differently. So theoretically, they could go down, right?
Yes.
Assessment.
Right, it's the things that like, aren't great, you know, they're not great anymore. They were great in two thousand five and then they're, all of a sudden, they're just average. Correct, yeah.
So how, I mean, guess, what would you say is the percentage? Just, I'm sure people are curious then, because they're probably like, well, ninety-nine percent of everything goes up. So what would be the percentage, I guess, of properties that when you do a visit, that didn't have a specific betterment? That were, let's say, have an increased assessment from what it currently is versus a reduced assessment?
So if there's no change, nobody's finished their basement or pulled in a pool, and we haven't been there in ten years, and nothing has changed in ten years. I would, I can't give you a set percentage, but I will say the majority will go down. Because as Ms. Cassavan said, if we, there's so much that's involved with this and, and some of the main factors are condition. So if something is in the exact same condition that it was ten years ago, when our inspector went out and said, "Wow, this is in good condition." Now, ten years later, no offense to anybody, it's not good anymore. It's average. And that's gonna affect the assessment. If you haven't updated your kitchen, and it's the same kitchen that was built in nineteen eighty-nine, it was modern in eighty-nine, it's not modern anymore. And those kinds of things affect the assessment, and those are the things that we're trying to get correct.
That's good, that's helpful.
It is, because I think people don't realize that. Like, I smile every time I clean those for Mike, the countertops in my bathroom, because they are no longer anything you wanna assess me for. Right, they're just average. And I'm not gonna replace them with granite or quartz, because.
You don't wanna hire assessment.
I don't wanna hire assessment. I don't want to deal with it. So, you know, it's, I just think people needs to realize that, you know, they're, you're not out to get people. You're out to make sure that, not paying more for something that they no longer, you know, can be considered as, as great. You have any more questions, or can we, because it is a public hearing?
No, I'm good.
Would like to maybe, if you have more? But I do know that there, you know, this is a public hearing and there is a member of the public here, and I didn't know if you wanted to be heard. Come on up, introduce yourself, please, for the record.
Tony Bonaventura, one twenty, how have? Well, I could spend a lot of time talking about this stuff, but I'm not gonna do it here. It's much better to go down there and talk about it. So I'm gonna try and look at more, I know it's not, doesn't all have to do with the assessor, but more from the philosophical standpoint and what data the town has given, especially compared to what I have seen in the past. Before the assessor was here and even some of you, ten, fifteen, twenty years ago, how we looked at numbers, I feel like a little more critically. And shoot, we showed more of the, we'll call it the negatives, rather than just all of the positives. One of the members called it sugar coating, you know, was questioning if I was asking if we're sugar coating. And I do, and I think in some cases we do. So with that, I'm gonna ask a couple of questions. When we pick communities to compare ourselves to, why don't we have a chart that shows all of the communities? All the communities in Worcester County, the state, or whatever, and show a graph of how we've been doing over the years in our average single-family tax bill ranking, rather than just handpicking communities? So I'll ask it to the chairman.
I mean, I don't pick the communities, so I will turn it over to our assessor.
So I pick Grafton, Northborough, because they're neighboring. I chose Holliston because it's similar in size, I think. There's some, there's some similarities there with Holliston. So I would point you to the Division of Local Services website. All of that information that you're looking for is on there. That is public service announcement to anyone that's a data geek. You can get on there and you can find so much information about your own community and how it compares to others. So that listing with the rankings that, of all three hundred and fifty-one communities in the Commonwealth is on that. I just, the slides are small, I can't put the entire state up there.
So I, I am very familiar with that site, and I've looked at it upside down and sideways over the last several years, which is, you know, why I got involved, because of what I see on that site and what I felt happening in the town, and I've talked about it before. But it seems to me, you know, in, even in the last few years, the, what we look at changes. So the data a few years ago wasn't really looking at, or as much looking at, how we compute, compare to communities of similar incomes and so forth. And now we're starting to do that, and that concerns me, because is that what we're looking to become? Are we only gonna start looking at ourselves based on income? Or are we gonna look at ourselves just compared to a town regardless of income?
So the comparisons that I provide are just, they're FYI. They don't have anything to do with the valuation process that we go through in Shrewsbury. So each community in the Commonwealth stands on its own and has their own factoring system. Their, their, the market is different in every community. So when we're valuing things, we are only looking at Shrewsbury. And then the, the comparisons are just, hey, this is kinda fun, let's see what everyone else is doing, even though it doesn't have one iota in, influence on what we're doing.
And that's why I said at the beginning, I'm not really, you know, I understand the valuation, the tax rate, all of the things you spoke about. There are some weeds that I would love to get into that I.
I'm here every day, come on over.
Yeah, but I think would be helpful, you know, comparisons of, when it comes to that subject. I still wanna go back to the other one, but when it has to do with the valuations and some of the questions that were being asked about how we value commercial property, because commercial property does include the apartment complexes now, correct? So are.
Actually, no. So apartment complexes are technically residential, so they have their own use code. So they're, they are valued together alone. So all the apartment complexes are, it's like single families, all the single families are together. All the apartment complexes are together. And then commercial encompasses everything from pizza places to gas stations to hotels, which we don't have. Warehouses, all of that kind of thing.
But so, so, but the valuation process is different with apartment complexes compared to, say, a single-family or a condo.
Right.
So that's what I'm, that's what I'm referencing. So the, it may be in the, you know, whatever code that's put on it. It may be clumped together with residential, and of course, of course, it is residential, but the valuation of it is done very differently. And so, from a planning perspective, when you're trying to run a town and figure out where you wanna go and what you wanna do and how you wanna educate the residents on how they should and shouldn't vote, I think that's really important. If you look at the, like, the last twenty years in Shrewsbury, most of the residential units have come from apartment complexes. The growth is significant in apartment complexes, not so much in single-family homes. I think it's, you might know the number off the top of your head, but it's under a hundred, for instance, per year.
Well, I've been here for four and a half years, so I can't speak to what's happened in the last twenty. But since I've been here, came, Edgemere came on and Five Twenty-Six Hartford Turnpike came on. And then the one on Harrington, the fourteen-unit one, came on. But you're right, there's a lot more coming down the road.
Yeah, like, single-family, it's very low, actually, for growth. And so that's a major shift in our tax revenue. And so what I'm concerned about is, you know, it's becoming more important, that valuation process on those apartment complexes, because the burden is being shifted, or can be shifted and has, you know, back a few years ago. I don't know, that, I didn't really see that stat clearly in there, but most often, the burden is shifted to single families, because if their values are going up and these other places are not, based on the way they're valued, you know, the, the difference in how you value them, not you, but the system values them, that's a burden on single-family homeowners. So it's, it's important from a planning perspective to understand that, I guess, is the point.
Well, single-family is your primary class. So they're gonna pay, pay the bulk of everything. Because they're eighty-nine percent of the total value of the town.
But isn't true that they often pay a higher percentage of increases than those other classes?
So, yes, but the only, there's, there is more, there's more sales.
I'm just talking about existing homes. When you, when the, when the pie gets split out to residential versus, say, apartment complexes, often is the case that, not just in Shrewsbury, but in many other towns, that the single-family residential homes pay a larger share of the, whatever the total percentage tax increases for that year. So you may have a tax increase of, and I didn't see it on the chart, but you may have a total tax increase or a budget increase or tax increase of three percent or three-point-two percent. But you could have single families paying eight percent more in one year. So that burden shift isn't the same to single families as it is. It, it doesn't come with, it doesn't, it's not lockstep with whatever the increase, the overall increases.
So apartment complexes are part of the residential class. So the residential class as a whole, including the apartment complexes, carries the bulk of the levy, because that's most of what we have. It's eighty-nine percent of our total value. And that includes the apartment complexes.
But what I'm saying is that you have to look at those separately, because it's a different valuation metric for them. So you could have theoretically, you know, based on, if you're, if you're valuing based on income, you could theoretically have a, a level valuation from year to year where single families go up significantly.
So this is our. Yep. So Alicia was just telling me, so for this year, our, the apartments, the value went up by ten-point-four percent. And single-family houses went up by seven-point-eight.
Existing or total?
Well, total value in the use code.
But that could, that is new, are new units included in that, or is that existing?
It's a total, everything that exists for the fiscal year that's being assessed.
So it could be new, there could be new apartment complexes in there.
Yeah, that was a question I was trying to ask earlier. I was just trying to clarify.
So there's no new apartment complexes this year.
But the parcel difference is two. This, it went from thirty-one to thirty-three parcels. So those two parcels have increased fifty-two million. That's what I was trying to clarify. If that was because that, when did Five Twenty-Six come on to?
So Five Twenty-Six is a strange animal. So they are apartments in those two buildings, but the owners chose to condo the property. So each of those buildings is assessed, is in the condominium use code. And then we're assessing each condominium building with multiple apartments in it. So that is not in the apartment class. That could account for the change.
What might be interesting to say is if you took the same, the thirty-one parcels that made up the FY twenty-twenty-five for the apartments, what are those thirty-one parcels now assessed at in twenty-twenty-six? Just the thirty-one? I don't know if you can do that. That's just, because that's what, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Bonaventura, if that was what you were kind of alluding to.
Yeah, and not just for this year, like, you know, trend-wise, yes. That's, that's exactly the question I'm asking.
So I would, I would caution the board and the public from trying to determine a spot assessment. I mean, it's okay to, if you just want the data. We have to, by law, do what's called mass appraisal. So I have to look at everything in the class together. And I can't say, this apartment complex, this, this single-family home, that. I have to look at them all together. It's called, mass appraisal's got nothing to do with Massachusetts, it's mass as the whole. And that's what we're required to do. So I'm not really allowed, through this process, I could probably dig through and get the data for you, but I'm not really allowed to pull things out and see what they are on their own, because we have to do mass appraisal in order to get approval by the DOR.
Okay, outside of this process, we could look.
Correct. So, and, and on that, on the, on the value, I heard you say about commercial properties, it's on income, or net income almost, is what I think I heard you say, correct? So how do you parse out, and we, we don't have to do it all here, but just like in general, there could be a lot of management costs baked in there or all kinds of stuff to bring the income down on those places, or up. I mean, it's an easy trick to pull on a.
So we do collect all of that information. We start with a potential gross income, we take into account vacancy and losses for collection. And then we take into account expenses. Sometimes the management costs are in there, or snowplowing, I mean, there's all kinds of things. And then you get to a net operating income. And then you apply a capitalization rate to that to determine the value. So again, using mass appraisal, we collect hundreds of income and expense reports from various entities in the community. We take all of that information, because nobody gets the same rent per square foot, nobody gets, has the same expenses. We analyze all of that and again, come up with median rents for each type of property and median expenses for each type of property. And then use cap rate development. To be perfectly blunt, I don't do that in-house. We have a vendor that does that for us, but I do understand the process. So he develops a cap rate based on band of investments or, you know, any other different method to get that. And then those cap rates are applied to each net op, the, the media, the net operating income that's created based on the median income and expenses, because again, it's mass appraisal.
So do, in that case, is there a formula that's applied? Let's just say there's a hundred units, a hundred-unit apartment building, and, you know, they're all a thousand. Let's just say there's a hundred units, a hundred-unit apartment building, and, you know, they're all a thousand square feet, and half of them are empty. The value is still there, so do they do a performer cap, cap rate? Like, they take the actual?
So, everything's as of a certain date. Okay, so it...
So it's actual, like, income based on...
For that particular property, but we're looking at, we're looking at medians again. So we're going to figure out the median vacancy rate. So if you have a twenty-unit apartment building, and you're the best landlord in the world, and you're full all the time, and I have a twenty-year apartment building, and I'm horrible, so I'm fifty percent vacant, those just kind of go into, again, the mass appraisal calculation. You're, even though you're full all the time, you're going to get credit for a median vacancy rate. And I'm half-empty, but I'm going to probably be charged less of a vacancy rate than I actually have, based on what the market is telling us in Shrewsbury.
Okay, yeah, thank you, that's, that's the answer I was, I was wondering if they just provide a formula for that?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah, the, the general, there was, there was one statistic up there that I, I kind of questioned, it was the cumulative increase, the five-year cumulative increase. And I just think that it could be misconstrued, because it talked about an increase. It showed five years, but you need a base year to have five years of increase, and there were only five shown. So it's almost like it's missing a year. I mean, it could be technically okay, but it's, it's kind of a little misleading, I think, because it doesn't average out five increases. It really only averages out, I believe, four increases.
Well, it's twenty, it includes twenty-twenty through twenty-four, so that's five.
Well, it's five years, but you, increase-wise, you really only have four increases, on the percentage increases.
I see what you mean, so I should have said over four years?
Correct.
Okay.
Or, yes, or add another year, and if it was going to be five, for the increases. So it makes that percentage, you know, one of the points that was made, was that residents are saying, geez, my tax bill went up a lot. So if you say it only went up eighteen percent, where it might have gone up twenty-two or three percent, you know, it's, I can see where that could be confusing. And then the last point that I, I bring up, and why I would like to see, I would like to see a bigger history shown, to see where our town is going, because there is a major change, it's not just evaluations. I know a lot of people get into evaluations, they talk about tax rates, which to me mean absolutely nothing. So every time I hear a tax rate discussion, I, I get concerned. I don't know how you feel about that, as the assessor, the tax rate?
Tax rate's just math. It's just math.
Yeah.
It's not, again, it's not... So, I'm part of the, the State Assessors Association, I have a lot of colleagues in the field, and our running joke is, as much as the board here this evening, not necessarily you, the general board across the Commonwealth would like to believe that they can set the tax rate, they can't. They're not voting on a rate, they're not approving eleven dollars and fifty cents. They are voting on a residential factor, and then the math will speak for itself.
Correct. The budgets divided up by the individual properties and values
That's exactly right.
determines the tax rate. So, the tax rate is kind of, it's not totally insignificant, but it's pretty insignificant, because it really depends on values in the town, and yada, yada, yada. So, and that's why I always point to the average single-family tax bill, and comparison both to yourself and to other communities, in how you're doing. That's the great equalizer. It used to be utilized in the town more than it is now. School department used it, they talked about this for years, but we've kind of got away from that, and that's what I'm speaking about, my concerns for trying to teach the public what to pay attention to. Because I hear so many people, even, you know, some of the, some of the select board members, you know, talk about tax rate, instead of what's really important. So, if we do not teach the residents properly, they're not going to know how to vote. They're not going to know what's good or what's bad for them. So I think it's really important that we show that, and I always bring up this example. I, I took three decades, and you can check the numbers, that come from the website that you referred me to. From nineteen ninety-one to two thousand, that ten-year span, our average single-family tax bill, our ranking was one thirty-five. Two thousand and one to two thousand and ten, we were one forty-one. And two thousand and eleven to two thousand and twenty, we were one thirty-nine rank, ranking, which would be more similar to maybe like Amalboro, which is similar in size to Shrewsbury. And now we're at approximately ninety, we're bouncing right around there. So it's a significant difference, which, you know, temporary, in a temporary little dip is okay, but where we're talking about budget problems, overrides, it's not going to get better. And I think it's important to explain that to the town, so we can make informed decisions. And I've been trying to preach that to a select board, or anybody that will listen, finance committee. So I'm bringing it up again. I just don't think it's fair to not show that, and show what's happening, because earlier we were speaking about people that were needing assistance, well, that's a desperation, and like you said, people don't want to come forward. But there's another whole group of people that are not in that boat, but they may be thinking like, hey, you know, I'd like to stay here, but I can't. You know, my home is worth more, and, you know, our, that's different from the average single-family tax bill, because they're not related on a one-to-one ratio, as you know. So, that's just something I've been pushing for, and I hope we can do that. That's, that's really all I have to say. Thank you very much for giving me the time.
Okay, are there any other questions? All right, why don't we move ahead to a vote then? Oh, actually, I have to close the public hearing. Motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, now we can take a motion.
So I move the board to adopt a residential factor of one for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six tax rate.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move the board to not adopt a residential exemption for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six tax rate.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I move the board to not adopt a small commercial exemption for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six tax rate.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I move to authorize the principal assessor to digitally sign the LA five form on Gateway.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much for your time this evening, and for your presentation. Always a pleasure to have you here. Very much appreciate it. Okay, that brings us to item number seven, under new business, which is to review and act to sign the warrant for the December seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five special town meeting. We discussed this at our last meeting. Just a second, get back to the file. Okay, so, we are going to be signing a warrant this evening that consists of just one article. It's proposing to put in place a temporary moratorium within the town's Lakeway overlay district and Route twenty overlay district for a period of twenty-four months. This would allow the town to review the mixed-use zoning provisions of both overlay districts, evaluate contemporary community objectives through an updated master plan and related studies, propose amendments to clarify items and revise the bylaws to better serve the town's land use and development interests, and develop additional traffic safety regulations, and assess infrastructure needs. The reason this was not on the most recent special town meeting warrant was because of timing needed to be able to take this article through the public hearing process with the planning board, make sure that it, you know, those dates could be met before it could go to a town meeting, and also to make sure that the moratorium would hold up under scrutiny, right, because the last thing we want to do is put forward something, and then have the state tell us that it doesn't meet the criteria for a moratorium, because a moratorium is actually a defined zoning term. So, are there any questions or discussion that we want to have on this?
Well, I think, I mean, my only comment is, I'm glad, you know, we're addressing it. I think when you look at community feedback around development in the community, in town, the one thing everybody's asked us to look at holistically is, you know, apartment complexes and that type of development. And I think this is a great tool to be able to do it systematically, and make sure that, before, you know, zoning is completely changed, that we're able to do it scientifically, and get a lot of information, and do it over that two-year period. So, you know, I'm like, really, I should just say I'm excited that we're doing it, and I'm glad that we're bringing it forth. And I know people are probably wondering why we just had a special town meeting, we have another one, but as you mentioned, it's just the timing, and to be able to ensure we have enough time for people to provide feedback, both at the planning board, and even, you know, a finance committee hearing again, so.
Right, because those are legally required by statute, that we have to have a certain number of days in between the town meeting, kind of work backwards. So, great that it's, it's coming forward. Did you have any comments?
Uh, no, I really, I just echo, I echo your comments, Mr. Richards. I think that this is a great opportunity, I think it's very timely, as we're looking at the master plan, to see what we can really do to kind of revisit those zoning overlays. And, I think that, you know, I certainly agree, that's feedback that we've heard consistently, I think, over the years and over time. So, I, I look forward to continued engagement with this, with planning board, with finance committee hearings, and with town meeting members, with community members, community members at large, as we, you know, go through this to your period, if it's approved at town meeting.
Yeah, definitely, and I think it's, the most interesting part about it is, if the moratorium is approved, there is a very robust engagement process that we go through, not only the master plan, but being able to have that ability to talk with residents and businesses, because I think this impacts businesses as well. And I know that, you know, it's been twenty years since we've really looked at the overlay districts that were put in place for Lakeway, and for Edgemere, and, and obviously, those overlay districts did what we wanted them to do, in that we've spurred that commercial development, right? We wouldn't have Lakeway Commons, we wouldn't have Edgemere Crossing. But at the same time, it comes with consequences, and, you know, we're starting to see the results of those consequences, and being able to address this need within the community, because like you said, it is the number-one thing on residents' minds. That ability to be able to just take a pause, and, and make sure that our next steps are going to create the kind of development that we want to see, and that reflects the needs of the community, is, is really very important. So I'm really glad that we're moving forward with this, and so hopefully I can get a motion to sign the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'm going to finish off correspondence, and then that'll be that. So item number thirteen is an email dated October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, from Melanie McGee, Shrewsbury Trails Committee, regarding the opening of the new Ross and Hills Trail. There's going to be a ribbon cutting for the Ross and Hill Trail on Saturday, this Saturday, November first, at ten AM. And if you want to attend that, there is some parking on Birch Brush Road, just we ask that you don't block in driveways there. Item number fourteen is an email dated October twenty-first, twenty-twenty-five, from the town of Brookfield, regarding a wage request from the town of Brookfield. Item fifteen is an email dated October twenty-second, twenty-twenty-five, from the Massachusetts Association of Regional Schools, regarding the advocacy alert, your testimony at upcoming, upcoming DESI hearings. Item number sixteen is an email from Megan Vincent on October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five, seven ninety-seven Grafton Street, regarding the special town meeting last night. And Megan was writing because of some photography that was taking place during standing votes, and saying that that had also happened at the annual town meeting in May, and that that does tend to make town meeting members feel uncomfortable. We all know that town meeting voter, votes are public when you stand for a vote, that is a public action. And hopefully, when the electronic voting system is up and running at our annual town meeting, there'll be less need for people to take pictures of standing votes, although it isn't, you know, it's not against the law to do so, I think it just was making some people feel uncomfortable. So that's all I have. Is there anything else to come before the board this evening? A motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you, and good night.